Good evening, welcome to your city council meeting. Today's Tuesday, July 18th, 2017. It is 7:00 PM according to my cellphone. Regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM in the council chamber that's here at City Hall. City clerk, read the roll please.
Thank you Mayor. Councilmember Davies.
Present.
Councilmember Genaway.
Present.
Councilmember Jennings.
Present.
Mayor Protem Minigar.
Present.
And Mayor Susiewicz.
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Lead Pastor Derek Dunn of City Harvest Church to come forward for the invocation, and then we'll have Boy Scout Troop 734 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please rise. Pastor Dunn, thank you.
You bow your head as I pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I want to thank you on behalf of all those that are gathered here today. We thank you for the many blessings in our lives. We thank you for life itself, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill your callings, for your provision, and for friendship. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you, or the freedom to reject you, and thank you for loving us. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, and order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant to them the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, that you'd give them a keen thirst for justice and rightness, and the confidence to do what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. We pray for personal peace in their lives, and joy in their tasks, and I pray for the agenda that is set before them today. Please give us an assurance of what would please you, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Laguna Niguel. In your name I pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor. Again, if the Boy Scout Troop 734 can come forward.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Boy Scout Troop 734, color guard advance. Please place your hand over your heart. Those in uniform and retired veterans salute. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all. Two, audience, you may be seated.
You guys can stay down there, we're gonna come down for some photos. Appreciate you coming out on your Tuesday night. This is one of the most important parts of our city council meetings. It's when our leaders of tomorrow come here today to assist us in starting our city council meeting. So, we really appreciate that. We love the highlights, and so why don't you tell us maybe your name, and where you're gonna go to school, or where you go to school, and what grade you're gonna be in? If you want to tell us what you're doing with your summer fairly quickly and pass it down, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Bryson Mackey, and I'm going to Mission Viejo High School, going, starting as a freshman.
I'm Noah Dugan, I'm going to ANHS Elisa Niguel High School, and I'm going in as a freshman also.
I'm KJ Kreebor, and I'm going to Elisa Niguel High School as a freshman.
I'm James Books, and I'm going to Elisa Niguel High School as a sophomore.
I'm Tomo, and I'm going to Dana Hills High School as a senior.
I'm Evan Books, I'm going to Niguel Hold Middle School, and I'm going into 7th grade.
I'm Alexander Etienne, and I go to Oxford Preparatory Academy, grade 4.
Scoutmaster Bill Etienne, UCLA and UC Irvine.
Hello, my name is Josh Licata, and I go to Elisa Niguel High School, and I will be going into the 10th grade.
My name is Max Etienne, and I'm going to Elisa Niguel High School as a sophomore.
Again, great bunch, guys, thank you so much for coming out on a Tuesday night during the summer, but you know, what I really want to do is thank the parents. Can all the parents please stand up of these guys, or anybody out there, let's give them a hand. We know it's a great effort on your part to bring your, you know, sons out, and you know, get them involved, get them active, and we really appreciate that, because again, I mean that you guys are the future leaders of tomorrow. So, anyone want to take any pics, come on up. All right, tonight we're presenting a proclamation declaring July as Parks Make Life Better Month. At this time, I'd like to have Parks and Rec Director Allison Giglio come forward for the presentation. Allison.
Mayor, if I may, can I invite a few of the staff up that are here tonight?
Absolutely.
Right on. All right, Tina Dipmar, Aquatics Supervisor, Colleen Gelfer, our Special Events and Contract Classes Supervisor, Brett Woodhull, Sports and Fields, Jeff Kirby from the Skate Park, also our Administrative Secretary, Kaoria Garcia.
Come on up, guys.
Recreation Coordinators Lynn Hewitt, Danielle Bornstein, Linda Teachman, Ann Casey, Ally Gallardo, and Sheila Huddle. Ron Rivera, Recreation Manager, almost forgot him. Did I forget anybody else? All right.
All right, so the Parks and Recreation Month, we have a proclamation. U.S. House of Representatives designated July as Parks and Rec Month. Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the city of Laguna Niguel, where parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic, environmental, well-being of the community and the region. Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy activity communities that aid in the prevention of chronic diseases. Again, parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, groundwater, hey, it's a great place for Laguna Niguel, that's the bottom line. Everyone who lives and resides in the city of Laguna Niguel benefits from the wide range of parks, trails, open space, sports fields, programs, and facilities such as Crown Valley Park and Pool, the Sea Country Senior Center, Community Center, Laguna Niguel Skate and Soccer Park, and again, the programs that you guys put on are just terrific. So, the city of Laguna Niguel, Parks and Recreation is permitted to, committed to promoting the California idea that parks make life better. So, the city council declared July 2017 to be Parks and Recreation Month, so the city of Niguel deserves this recognition from our resources that you guys all put together. Thank you. Ally, you want to say?
I'm gonna hand this over to you guys to hold here. Thank you to city council, obviously, for your ongoing support of our programs and our staff. We are very fortunate to have a great staff. This is only a handful of them. They are dedicated, they are hardworking, some of them have been here over 25 years. I think Tina and Linda Teachman, I don't know who's been here the longest out of the two of you. We have some that have been here under a year. We have great leadership under our Recreation Manager, Ron Rivera. I'm just, I'm very fortunate, we are grateful to work for an amazing community who supports us as well, so thank you very much for everything, and I'm happy to get all of them here for a city council meeting tonight. Very proud to work for a great team.
Stay up here. Stay here for a picture over here, guys. Again, thank you, you guys have done so much for the city, and this summer's been fantastic because of all your work, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentations this evening. We're gonna move on to public communications. Okay, we've got a few of these. Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter, whether or not appears on the agenda is required to submit a completed gold-colored request to speak form to the city clerk prior to being heard by the city council. Each person will be given three minutes to speak, and again, we have a few, if there's any more, if anyone wants to speak, again, in the back over by Dennis, just fill it out and hand it to our city clerk. Thank you so much. Again, these are in the order I had them here. Cyrus Hujadi, is that right, Cyrus?
Yeah.
Okay. Please introduce yourself, your address, and then you have three minutes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Cyrus Hujadi, I live by Greenfield in Crown Valley, and I'm here to talk about the tax policy of California, which is a disgrace, the raising our gas taxes, we're paying something like 70 cents more on average than the rest of the country, they just extended cap and trade, and I understand we need more money, but why aren't they taxing profit margins of oil companies instead of taxing the average person? You guys should do something about this, send an alarm to Sacramento, and also do something about SB 54. I think you should sort of research what it is, a sanctuary bill state, at least make a compromise, okay? Because I understand that there's some grievances for it, but when it comes to immigration, I want you to all really understand what is the elephant in the room. I hope you guys are really aware of the global power structure that runs this world, that runs our media, that influences our election, that gives us an illusion of choice, no matter a lot of different things. I'm talking about the Zionist, pro-Israel manipulation of our society with the lobbyists huge, not to mention the Jesuit Vatican control of our entire world, and our federal, state, and local government, this is real folks, I suggest you Google and research this, and they are controlling our Federal Reserve, the Wall Street bankers, and what does this sign say? Honk to stop a real estate bubble, it's coming soon, home prices are overvalued, I'm concerned that there's gonna be another bailout, there's gonna be another round of foreclosures, and a lot of this hyping up of home prices that are over a million dollars, it's very likely it's gonna come to a crash, because interest rates are going up, and guess what? The bubble, if it continues to rise, it's gonna pop. So, I'm telling you all, for you all to wake up and understand that how we're being skewed, all right? So, for the most part, forget these foolish elections, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna have to fight this global establishment, we may have to instigate a global resource-based economy, this system is not working, we're gonna have to take to the streets, demand change, because this world is pretty messed up, and it's pretty divided, and it's all engineered by the mass media, the Koch Brothers, George Soros, this is exactly what's going on. Folks, wake up. Our entire world and this country is in a critical stage. And by the way, I want to comment about the infill development that's happening in Cabot Road, I am for high-density development, we gotta have plenty of high-density development all over the California coast, but for heaven's sakes, no cardboard box-looking apartments, have some design review, look back at the old buildings we used to build in the 1920s, thank you.
Richard Regal, Rick?
Mayor Sluzewicz, council members, staff. Thank you, my name is Rick Regal, I'm currently serving as a director on the Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce, I'm here on their behalf. First of all, I want to thank you all for your support and partnership over the years with the chamber. Without you, we could not operate as efficiently and well as we do, starting with a very successful 4th of July, we saw it on the screen, it was a wonderful event, you were all there. Started with the chamber pancake breakfast, we had the run, we had a concert in the park, we had fireworks, I slept like a baby that night, but what a wonderful, what a wonderful event. Thursday evening, this coming Thursday evening, the chamber is partnering with the chambers of San Clemente, San Juan, and Dana Point for a business mixer at Monarch Bay Resort. Great time to come out and meet lots of folks from our neighboring cities. And finally, our monthly breakfast for the chamber is happening a week later, because of the timing, and it's, July kind of throws things off, and that's at El Niguel Country Club a week from this Friday. I know most of you usually come to those things, but really, I'm just here to thank you and show our support for you as you show your support for us.
Thank you, Rick. Next up, we have, no, you're done, sir. Next up, we have John Dalawal.
If you could put a timer next time, that would be great.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Dalawal, I'm living here at Laguna Niguel for 23 years, and I own 7th Heaven Market around the corner, I serve in the community for 23 years. My landlord keep jacking up the rent, so I am unable to pay anymore, so I had to leave the space, I'm requesting the city, if city allow me without any restriction to move to other occasion. I don't want to go to another city, I'd like to stay here.
Is this something, Jack, is this something you can get involved with, or something, get a name and number, are we done? We'll get a name and number and see, it may be a civil matter though. Yes, I got it. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dalawal, we've got your contact information, thank you, sir. Is there any more requests to speak? That concludes our public communications. I'm gonna move on to the consent calendar of items 1 through 15, are there any items that need to be discussed or pulled? I'll start to my left, Mr. Jennings? Ms. Genaway? Mr. Minigar?
I just want to recuse myself from item 15.
Okay. And that's it, okay, and Ms. Davies?
And Mayor, I was gonna note, since the Mayor Protem did it as well, I have to recuse myself from number 7.
Okay.
Apparently, there is a storm drain too close to my home, so I recuse myself from voting on that. Otherwise, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Well, hold it, I do want to pull item 1.
Okay, good.
You make the motion for the rest.
I'll do, I'll make a motion for the rest.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all good. Hopefully, council will just follow my lead on this one here, just give me a second. I just want to confirm, there's two items on here, bear with me, it's item 93742 for West Coast Arborist for $26,411. 6, I think in the front section. And then the second item, let me see here, I guess I should have been more organized, huh? 93875 for West Coast Arborist for $40,524. So, I do have it together, that's on page, I guess that's 6, yeah, of the second section. This is for Mr. Erlinson. Mr. Erlinson, do we, you know, do we as a council have the authority to pay these two items based on our current status?
The July, let me take a look here, just to make sure. These are both fiscal year 1617 invoices for work, that's been, that's before you. We have an original agreement, I do believe now, sir, that this falls under the original agreement, this is not the extra work that was done as part of the mid-year budget review, if I'm not mistaken?
We'll have to go back and double-check, but I'm pretty sure you're correct, yes.
Well, Mr. Erlinson, the mid-year budget, there was a discussion, what I'm asking is, does this council, I want to protect us up here, okay? Does this council currently have, under the 1516 budget year, approved council, what is it called?
Authority to pay these two items.
Authority to pay these things, we see a $40,524, and a $26,000, whatever it was, 26,000 plus, which are both above the signing limits of both the department head and the city manager, and I'm asking a simple question to protect us, I'm really trying to protect those guys, is, and the taxpayer, of course, do we have the signing authority to sign on that right now, based on that the council actually approved in the 1516 budget year?
1617.
1617 budget year.
If the city council votes to pay these two items, they do have that authority.
Would we be breaking our policy procedures, which is part of our, our, what, our policies, basically, our municipal code? We have policies within our municipal code that are hard cap spending limits, we have signing limits for people as well, so in 1516, based on where we are today with our spending for this contractor, West Coast Arborist, do we have the authority to approve this? I'm saying we don't. Sure, we can approve it, but then we would be breaking the laws that we, not the laws, but the municipal code, our own laws, our city laws, that deal with financial stuff. Would we be breaking that if we approve it?
Without having the actual unencumbered or encumbered balances in front of me, I can't give you a definite answer on that, I don't have that particular information in front of me to answer one way or the other, to give you a definite answer.
Steve, we talked about this earlier, we talked about that you present these things to us, and you sign on the back, we talked a lot about procedure, and you're said, I even read it to you, I said, make sure you have all the supporting documents, okay? And you said, you said that you would, you said, you said you would have all the supporting documents.
Which I do, in the back, but...
So, can we get these, and do we have to wait, or what should we do with the meeting?
No, no, I have the detail that backs up the invoices, I don't have the budget reports with me to reflect that.
I thought we spent a great deal of time talking about this this week, okay, I'm just gonna do this. I strongly suggest you just follow my lead on this deal, let's just pull these two items for payment right now, and then we'll just do this next meeting. Is that, does that sound like a pretty good plan, Steve, just to make sure until we check those numbers?
Yes, I have no, no issues with that.
But that makes sense for us to do that, right?
Yeah.
All right, guys, who else, I mean, that's what I want to do, I'll move the balance of the, of the thing, go ahead.
Well, I have a question on that.
Go ahead.
Is the question whether or not these are expenses that have already been approved by the council?
Yes, that's the question.
Okay.
Is this expense approved by the council? He's saying he's not sure.
It's been approved by the council in a staff report that we've gotten on a prior consent calendar, okay.
Yes, something along those lines. Steve, I'm just asking the finance director to prove it up that we as a council can actually approve this payment. Again, it's up to you guys, I, if you can follow my leadership or not, I think we pull these two and then vote for the rest. Anyone want to second that? Okay, you guys don't want to pay this, you guys want to pay those two then items? That's fine. Do you want to move it as consent calendar as is, and you want to pay two items that I'm basically stating, and you guys know that there's been a lot of discussion about this, you know that, and what I'm saying is that we have exceeded, we, there was a con- And what I'm saying is that we have exceeded, we, there was a contract, we've exceeded it, which means we can't pay it until we approve, you know, that we want to approve a new contract at a higher level.
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't have a problem pulling, pulling those so that we can get the information that's needed.
Thank you, Ms. Davies.
Obviously, you have a point to be made. It's, it's obvious out here. I think that would let, you know, the finance director bring the information, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, I mean, again, if you guys want an answer tonight, then we, I'd phrase it differently, but this gives us him a couple of weeks to answer it at the next council meeting and tell us whether or not we have authority in the next council meeting will pass this. So then we can just move on.
I'm fine with pulling those two so we can get that information.
Guys, you know, it's up to you, but I, I strongly suggest we do this. I'm going to vote no if we don't.
Well, I'm lacking information, so we, we haven't had a lot of information about this. I haven't discussed it. This council hasn't brought it up, and I don't know what you're talking about.
Me, too.
So before, before I make a decision based upon that, I'll take your lead and say that we'll pull the items and, and consider it.
Sure. And again, what I'm talking about, just to be really clear, is we sign hard cap contracts every single year. When you reach that contract level, you can't spend any more money until the council approves an add-on or a higher cap to the contract. If you do that, you're violating our policies with our own municipal code, and that's why I brought it up. That's probably simple to understand for pretty much everybody, correct? Okay, thank you. All right, very good. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It was firsted by me, seconded by Laurie Davies. Thank you so much. Okay, I guess we're done with, with that. All right, no other business items. I guess we are moving on to other business and council reports. Any of the committees that you have any comments for, or do we just want to go council reports? What do you guys want to do? All right? Council reports. We'll go with you, Fred. Mr. Minagara.
Very good, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, June 22nd, I attended Orange County Council of Governance Meeting at the City of Irvine's City Hall. This, the hottest subject was discussions on SB 1, as everybody knows. And, um, on Friday, June 23rd, I attended another great event that was put out by the City of Laguna Niguel Parks and Rec Department. On Tuesday, July 4th, I attended the July 4th events set by Parks and Rec Department, Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce, Laguna Niguel YMCA. And in the evening of the same day, I attended the unveiling of the Freedom Sculpture, also known as the, um, the Statue of Liberty of the West Coast in West Los Angeles, actually Century City, next to the City of Beverly Hills, along with the Mayor of Los Angeles, Beverly Hills, Santa Monica, and quite a few other people, and state dignitaries, and over 70,000 people. It was a great event. On, on July 7th, I attended the Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce's Governmental Affairs Meeting, presenting the U.S. Secret Service's presentation on the credit card skimming. On Tuesday, July 11th, I had a meeting with Dave Morgan, the gentleman that is the lead headhunter for the recruitment of the new city manager for our great city. On Thursday, July 13th, along with all the TCA's executive management team, I walked along all the proposed new alignments that happened to be the most controversial toll road extension of 241 in South Orange County. As a practitioner, as a registered engineer in the State of California, and as a board member of the Transportation Corridor Agency, I do get tons of emails, phone calls, and letters from people in South County specifically to mention, from the City of San Clemente, from the City of San Juan Capistrano, which is about 20%, 70% City of San Clemente, and 10% from the residents within the unincorporated area of Orange County, Ladera Ranch. And as you well know, people of South County, City of San Clemente, that I have to be specific according to our legal counsel, is 100% opposing any of those proposed alignments. Again, nothing has been done yet. There has been no engineering studies. There has been no environmental impact report, which is for the State of California Environmental Impact Statement, which is for the U.S. government. The TCA has not done anything except presenting different options, different possibilities for potential alignment along any of those routes in South Orange County. So it is extremely premature at this juncture. We are fortunate that I don't see anyone in our audience, nor I have received any single email from 66,000 residents that we have in our beautiful city to give us directions, yea or nay, with regard to any of those proposed South County routes. So in conclusion and in short, the, the position of our city, well, at this juncture, is all the study is going to be revealing which option, which alternative would be the most viable from economic perspective, from environmental perspective, from engineering perspective. So we're talking about four years from now, that we are going to be doing any real engineering or final design PSNE packages for any of those alternatives. So again, it's extremely premature. I attended a meeting with 700 people in attendance. 1,000 people were online monitoring what we say, what we do, how we act. Nothing has been done, and nothing's going to be done, except independent consulting firms are going to be, again, analyzing those. Other cities have taken positions, Mr. Mayor, with regard to advocating or opposing the proposed alignments at this juncture, I think, and I've relayed that to the top executive management, TCA, that we're going to wait and see. We are here, we are serving the citizens of Laguna Niguel. If our citizens would prefer any of those alignments or would oppose any of them, I'll be their spokesperson. So before then, my position as a board member has been neutral. With that, that I wanted to elaborate more. In that evening, I also attended the ACCOC Summer Reception with over 200 elected official civic leaders, community leaders in Newport Beach. And I have one announcement to do, to, to make. I'm very pleased to announce that our own resident, Mr. Jack Sprick, an Eagle Scout, has won the Southern California Association of Governments Scholarship. This scholarship would entitle this Eagle Scout, this outstanding student that we have that happened, happens to be a true member of 772, and going to the Mission Church as one of the major patrons of council member John Mark Jennings, that, from Orange County, he's the only one that was selected. From six counties within Southern California, they picked one, and he was the most outstanding one, so you get the scale of it. The number one is going to Stanford University with, let me get it right, 4.95 GPA and tons of other qualifications and credentials. So we are very proud of our residents, the parents that are supporting these kids, the future generation of our beautiful city, that definitely, inevitably, they're going to be the greatest leaders for our community. With that, that's all my report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Minagara. And that's Jack right out here. No, okay, sorry about that. Had it wrong. Thought he was. Very good. Let's go, Councilmember Genaway.
Okay, well, the place in the USA to spend Fourth of July is Laguna Niguel. So thank you, Allison, Director Giglio, to you and your department. You created a fantastic day for all of our residents, and I know a lot of people, had people come in from out of town, just because it's so much fun to celebrate in our city. So you all worked while we could all have fun. So please convey to the rest of your staff our appreciation. You know, we do follow legislation that is going on in the state, and in fact, in this consent calendar, we did take an opposed position on the proposal for the wireless cell towers. And that is something that I know a lot of our homeowners' associations are watching, too. Because if what is proposed is passed, not only could towers be placed where you don't want them, but you would no longer be able to collect the fees for leasing that space. So it's a great impact to the cities, to the HOAs, and more importantly, to local control. And that's something we really watch, is that they keep trying to chip away at local control, so we do pay attention to what's going on. Next Thursday, actually, this Thursday, in two days, we'll have a workshop for the human trafficking. We had a town hall a couple of months ago, and many people came together and want to work on that issue, and there's a multi-pronged approach on how we're addressing it. So the workshop will not be a presentation, but we'll go over the different ways you can participate and get involved and help with this issue. One of the areas that a lot of people are very enthused to work on, and they're, you know, this is something they're passionate about, is the legislative advocacy. And we just had a, a new development last Friday up in Sacramento. You've heard all of us, I think, on this diocese talk about SB 57, and, excuse me, not SB, Prop 57, and what it has done to our criminal justice system. And a lot of crimes that we would consider to be violent felonies are now classified as nonviolent, and therefore, those that are convicted are eligible for parole earlier. Well, Senator Pat Bates, who is our senator, had a proposal for SB 75 to take those crimes that a reasonable person would consider as being a violent felony and putting them where they belong in the penal code. But now, the governor, I guess because he's been hearing about it from throughout the state, has decided this is going to be his project. So rather than doing, laying out the legislative advocacy like we're doing, there's going to be a 45-day comment period where corrections and rehabilitation will be taking comments from the public on Prop 57. So we've got 45 days to be getting the word out to everybody we know in the entire state. So that is something that we will be working on in the workshop and teaching, how do we do that? What do we do? What's the message that we send? So if you or anyone else that you know are interested, please join us on this Thursday in the community room at City Hall at 7:00 PM. It will be a shorter meeting than last time, but we'll have some important information. And then also, many of you know that this is our city manager's last meeting, and I just want to thank Rod for your time here at the city and what you've done. You had a major project when you came to the city, and that was to work on the development of Crown Valley Park. So when you drive by and hear the laughter and shrieks of children having fun at the splash pad, you know, that's one of the things that you accomplished. So thank you.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you. I, I, too, was at the Fourth of July event. I can definitely attest, on behalf of everyone, it was a bad day to be a pancake. There was, I can't imagine how many we ate and devoured, but there were a lot. But there was thousands of people out there, and if you really want to see the core, the heart of the city, go out there and check out the smiling faces and the panting faces from having run the dinkay. And then, much later that night, the idea, the two finales, by the way, on the fireworks show was fantastic, so we were very surprised, and that was fun. I had the pleasure of sitting down with Councilmember Genaway and some of our city staff for our newly-formed ad hoc development committee. I know that there are people in this room, and I can promise you that there's thousands on television around town that have talked to me about, they love restaurants, and they want them in our town, and they want new businesses, and they want them in our town. And Councilmember Genaway and I had just a great meeting. We went through almost every place in town, I think, and all the new prospects and things. That really has some good, some good prospects coming up, and I'm proud to be on it, and I think we're going to end up doing some good work, like I think everyone else did. I had a very good meeting with Dave Morgan, who's our recruiter for the city manager, and some people inspire a lot of confidence, and Dave is certainly one of those people. I know that we're in good hands. That's going to be a very thorough search, and I felt very comfortable coming out of that meeting. So for the staff and for the city and everyone else, I know that we are investing our, our future in at least a very good recruiter that should be bringing us some good talent. I was, I appreciate the Mayor Pro Tem mentioning Jacob Sprick. He is, he is a good friend of mine and has been since he was a child, and his parents are wonderful people, and I was truly proud of him for getting the SCAG. Not only the award, but it also comes with an internship next summer in engineering. The Mayor Pro Tem would be glad. So, so it's, it's a very good thing, and we are very proud of him here in Laguna Niguel. So with that, thank you very much. Oh, and no, why? I almost forgot. I have it written down, and I skipped over it. I just, I have to say, Rod, thank you so much. When I was new to City Hall, new on the commissions, new everywhere around town, you were, you were a very welcoming face to me, and I just wanted to say thank you. It's, it's been nice to serve with you. Public service is one of those callings that sometimes are lost on people when they go to, they go to school. It's not an obvious choice, but I can tell you that's an honorable one. It's one that we all deserve to treat as sometimes a higher calling, and I've decided that you are quitting this work and getting into a legitimate line of work now, going into the archdiocese. So I, I commend you, I thank you, and I wish you nothing but the best. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Ms. Davies?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say a few comments in regards to Councilmember Genaway's. Again, on the consent calendar, we went ahead and opposed SB 649. Right now, you're going to see, probably going on five years here, very seldom do we bring up issues and oppose them unless we really feel that they're affecting local control. And sadly, this year, basically, there is a big reach out there up in Sacramento to get a lot of local control taken away from us. So probably almost every meeting, we've been putting, you know, a bill up here and opposing it, and one of the reasons is to make sure that you know what's going on. And again, with SB 649, they say small cell, and people don't always realize, when I first heard it, I thought, oh, it's small cell. You know, this is like your AT&amp;T. You have your big towers. Well, small cell to them could be 15 feet, 20 feet high, and so they would actually have the authority to do and put these up on our streets, and basically wherever they want to put these up. So I highly recommend you do contact Assemblyman Bill Bro, Senator Pat Bates. This is SB 649. And for those interested, we did oppose a sanctuary city bill a while ago. If you actually go back, they said we've been opposing quite a bit, but our first priority, it's not only locally, but it is making sure that we aren't losing our local control at a state level, because we believe that we know what's best down here where you live, compared to the people living up at the state sometimes. And we have great representatives, and we're very blessed with that because they've always supported us. So again, that's SB 649. I'm also a director on OCTA, and I just wanted you to know, a lot of you, you'll start seeing this, but we have the 405 Improvement Project, which is the largest project we've ever done. And the final step in approval process, which was acquired by the Transportation Infrastructure Finance Innovation Act, known as TFIIA, program was actually finalized. And due to that, when executed, the 627 million TFIIA loan is expected to save the taxpayers of Orange County well over 300 million in loan interest and cost. So that'll be going down the line, but that was passed, which really was a big success. Part of the ACCOC, I was appointed as the chair for the Sober Living Committee, and I know I'll be working with Councilmember Genaway well on that, but again, we're looking at ways that we can keep those that are in these homes, as well as those that live nearby, safe and do it the right way. So we're working in a pilot program through ACCOC as well. Also want to thank Allison and your staff. Again, what an incredible Fourth of July. We have the best fireworks, and it's funny, because when, I, I have an area where I live where you can see all five, and when there's stop, ours come, you know, ours keep going. And so they, just a beautiful show, and I know all the hard work that everyone put in, so thank you for that. And I want to say thank you to our fire chief, because I live about two blocks from Nordstrom's Rack, and a couple of weeks ago, a fire, a brush fire came up right behind there. And I'll tell you, they were on it fast, because I would just happen to be walking my dog right on Ranching Niguel, and I basically saw every, every car I knew we had. So I'm like, well, there's only two blocks they can go before they hit the, the border, so it has to be close. And within minutes, the helicopter was going over the lake, grabbing the water. They had control quickly. I appreciate the response and letting us know what was going on, but once again, I mean, we know it's that season, but your staff acted so quickly, our police services acted so quickly, so fantastic job, and also getting the word out there and letting people know that it was contained. So good job on that, and I also want to say, sad, this is your last meeting, I know we're going to have a farewell party for you outside, but I want to thank you as well. You know what? I had the pleasure of being one that did hire you. I think you've done a great job. And as I, I've told people down the line, it's hard to find a good city manager that puts the council first, because a lot of times, city managers tend to do what they want to do, and, and then this council has projects, but there's not all this time. One of the things that was important to me are certain things, such as SCORE, other projects we've gotten done, and it was, what does it take? This park, that park probably would have never happened if it wasn't for you and the staff and, and making it happen. So you have definitely contributed to this city. I'm sorry to see you go, but you know what? I'm grateful that I've had the opportunity, and I know our friendship will continue, but thank you so much for everything. I know how much you love this city, and it's definitely shown, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'm going to go around the horn here. Jack, go ahead, please. I'll go last. Go to the last.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things that we have coming up that I'd like to announce. Tuesday, July 25th, we are going to have a commercial traffic checkpoint. It will be on Crown Valley Parkway. You're going to see police officers from all over the state of California down here to work with some of the commercial issues that we've been having, preventing some of the accidents. And that'll go on from about 6:00 AM till about noon. Then on Friday, the 28th, we're going to do a DUI checkpoint, and that will be again at Crown Valley near Greenfield. That's going to go on from about 7:00 PM until about 4:00 AM. And we're, again, going to have officers from all over Southern California at that. And one last little promotion, the next council meeting on August 1st, unfortunately, it's the same night as we do National Night Out. It's time to get out, get to the parks, show the people that the parks are safe and a fun place to go to. And that'll be from 5:00 PM until 8:00 at Laguna Niguel Elementary School. We'll have helicopter flying over, horses, all kinds of great stuff. But thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Songo, for sitting in tonight. And again, thank you for moving that location for the DUI checkpoint. I appreciate that as well. I think that all of the council are pretty excited about that. Finance Director Earlson.
Yes. This city is losing a great city manager, and I'm losing a terrific mentor. But I'm not all that sad, because I'm keeping a very wonderful and fantastic friend. And Rod, I wish you the best in your endeavors in the future.
Thank you, buddy.
You're welcome.
That's all I have. Senator Dixon.
I'd like to say the same to Rod. I appreciate the last four years.
Thank you, buddy.
And I hope the rest of your career is successful as it's been so far.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Fire Chief Adams.
Yeah, thanks for the mention about the fire. It was, we got on it quickly, kept it small. One thing to note is the green belt that the fire burned through absolutely did its job, slowed the progress of the fire, allowed us the time it normally takes to get there and, and keep it small. So it looked pretty spectacular at the beginning, 30-foot flames and a little hillside, but you know, the green belts are doing what they, what they're supposed to do. Given that, as you look around at the hills and the colors of the hills, we are in the dead of fire season. And in the last two weeks, the Orange County Fire Authority has sent over 100 personnel and 20 different pieces of equipment up to the various fires that are currently burning now. We will get our turn. I don't want to be Mr. Doom and Gloom here, but we've had history, and we will likely have events in our near future if we get wind. So just stay heads up, be alert, and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Last thing, sorry.
Please, go ahead.
Mr. Foster, thank you, and best of luck.
Thank you so much. Community Development Director Roseberry.
Thank you. Just two things. The first one is just a reminder that we are going to be having a workshop with the Planning Commission Special Meeting on Thursday regarding the North Getty Project. This will just be a discussion with the Planning Commission, just to kind of give them a heads up on what's coming down the road with that project. And then, of course, I want to take a moment to thank Rod for the, I guess, only 10 months that I had with him here, and really thank him for taking the opportunity to get to know me and for hiring me. I have so enjoyed my time here, and I will really miss seeing you and getting your words of wisdom.
Government Service Director Bill.
I wanted to let you know that the internet upgrade is completed, so that when the tech tutor program restarts over at the senior center, there should be a much faster and much easier access to the internet. And also, while we're talking about legislation, we talked a lot about some of the bills that we opposed. We did support this week AB 572, which has to do with sober living homes. And it would create, it's a very special Orange County-only type legislation that would create some assistance for us if we have issues with sober living homes. And we were happy to support that on behalf of ACCOC. And again, as everyone else has mentioned, Rod has a big presence around City Hall, and he will definitely be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill. Community Engagement Manager North.
We like to encourage Laguna Niguel residents to sign up for community, the Community Emergency Response Team, also called CERT Academy. The academy starts on August 24th. It's a seven-week program. It's free for Laguna Niguel residents. It's a great opportunity to learn about disaster preparedness. For those who are interested in signing up, please email cert@cityoflagunaniguel.com.org. And also, I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Foster, for also hiring me and then also providing me words of wisdom in the month and a half that I've been here. Thank you, and I wish you the best of luck.
City Clerk Gomez.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have too much to report right now. We've just been very busy with agendas and city business, as always. And I just want to say, too, that I'm really proud to serve with the Military Support Committee. They've really been doing a lot of good work there. And I want to thank the co-chairs for all your work. It's a lot of involvement with the committee members. They are very hands-on. So I want to thank you both for all your assistance in helping me get used to being part of that group. It's a very good group. And Rod Foster, this is the second time that I have to say goodbye to you from the city. I left an unexpired term in my former city to work with you, because I believe in you. I've trusted you. I've always called you my brother, because you are just somebody that, to me, has, like I've always called you the conductor. You just have a way of leading your orchestra. You know all the instruments, you know the key players, and you know, always know what everyone does. And you've been able to coordinate agendas like no other city manager that I've ever worked with. And I've been working for the government over 30-plus years. I started as a young teenager, and I just wanted to tell you that it's been an honor, a privilege, and a pleasure to serve this beautiful, amazing city with you, Rod. We'll be able to talk about this for years to come, and I wish you all the best in your new position with the church. And thank you again for your mentorship, your friendship, and for believing in me and trusting me. And I just will miss you very much. Thank you.
Ms. Giglio, Parks and Rec Director.
Thank you. This Friday, July 21st, is our Concert in the Park featuring Elevation, a U2 tribute. So get there early or take the shuttle from City Hall. Registration is still open for our Kids Campfire Event on Saturday. It's $25 per camper, and pre-registration is required by Friday. The next Rule the Pool event is Friday, July 28th, at Crown Valley Pool, $5, 8:00 to 10:00 PM, 9:00 to 13-year-olds, and parents are not allowed. And July 29th is the next late-night skate night from 9:30 to midnight. We're still accepting applications for vendors for the Fall Crafts Fair until October, until August 1st. The event is on October 1st at Sea Country Center. Applications and rules are available at cityoflagunaniguel.org. And don't forget to purchase your tickets for Laguna Niguel Community Theater presenting our town starting July 28th. You can go to lagunanigueltheater.org, and tickets range from $10 to $20. And last but not least, thank you to Mr. Foster. You took a chance on me and encouraged me to do something way outside my comfort zone. So I appreciate what you've done and your support, and I wish you the best of luck.
Public Works Director Abzana.
Thank you. I'd like to report that over the last couple of weeks, we replaced two air conditioning units at the senior center. I think it's cooler over there now. They successfully completed that project this past week. Our paving project on Crown Valley is continuing. Over the last couple of days, we paved a portion between Capitan and Greenfield, and over the next couple of days, we'll finish paving between Molton and La Plata. By the end of this week, all the traffic delays hopefully be down to zero. To Mr. Foster, I'd like to wish him continued success in his new endeavor. He's been a true leader. He's done a great job for the city, and we'll miss him here. Good luck to you.
Thank you. City Manager Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item to report on, and then just a few comments. I talked to Frank Kim today, the county CEO, and discussed with him the Agora Project, and they're down to one issue, so I think the council will be happy about that. They're still working through the construction completion bond issue, but the remainder of the docket's been cleared. So he's hoping within a few weeks, hopefully, we'll get a, we'll get a good word. And I guess if I had only one regret, I guess that's what it'll be. I was hoping by the time that my service concluded, we'd see this downtown built. And the Agora Project, as we all know, I think is key to that happening, and it will be exciting once I do transition now into retirement and become part of the, part of the public. I guess one of the gifts that I get back is that public microphone. So I look forward to becoming an active part of this community and actually getting more involved with government as a result of not being your city manager. Secondly, I do want to thank this community for the opportunity to serve. It's been a wonderful opportunity to, to move my family down here, to be able to transition, and to be able to move on with, with now with my life. Public service, I believe, is a noble profession. It's noble to serve. There's obviously been different cities that have, have caused structures and caused issues that we've had to manage through that have changed our, our organization, not this organization, but I'll say the public sector as we know it. And for a lot of ways, the better. But those things we learn and we grow from. But public, public service has always been a very, very noble profession, and I think that Laguna Niguel proves that every day. We proved that here in Southern Orange County, and we prove that this community is, is a leader in everything that it does. This executive team is one of the best, if not the best, that I've ever worked with. I'm very, very proud of each and every one of you, and we have a very, very strong staff, a very small staff of 64 people, smallest city that I've ever managed. And I've managed cities in excess of 400 people. But I do want to make one, one note of one staff member that's with us tonight, and that's Wanda Lauer. She's sitting out, and we're so happy that she's back. We pray for her complete recovery, and she's our, our deputy city clerk, and we just can't wait to have her back within the folds of, of government. She came and visited today, and I, and I quipped to her, I said, "We've been keeping her desk nice and neat and dusted." And I think she was a little happy about that. But it was nice to see her. It's nice to see her here again. And Wanda, we just pray for your complete recovery. I'd like to thank the council, like the council for the opportunity to serve and to serve this great city. And I really appreciate this attorney that's sitting next to me. I've had the opportunity to work for 32 years with a variety of city attorneys, and there's no one better than Terry Dixon. And I'll tell you, I've worked with some of the largest firms, some of the most expensive firms, $500, $600 an hour attorneys. This community gets such a bargain with him. And, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, that's going to be the biggest decision for the council, when you have to decide, you know, city managers come and go, this city attorney's been you from the very beginning. The history he has of this community, the heart he has for this community, and his ability to serve. I would do everything that I can to keep him happy and to keep him here, because he serves you all well. I really thank this community, and I thank the leadership of the council. I thank the former mayors, Robert Tier, and other former mayors, Linda Lynn Holm, Jerry McCluskey, who I miss so much, and I know who we all miss, Gary Capida. Names go on and on. It's been beautiful. But I'll tell you, the most wonderful thing about this community is right here in this community, this, in this, in this council chamber. This council, before I came on board, I think it was when Robert, it might have been mayor, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, placed "In God We Trust," not once, but twice. So you see it when you're looking at the council, and you see it when you leave the door. That's amazing. Every city I've ever seen has only put it once. And it's nice, that's the highest word in this council chamber, because when it comes to it, that's what we're accountable to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Again, thank you for your service. I was fortunate to call you a friend. I love your word "initiative." And, you know, you've got a lot done in the city, for the city, for the benefit of the city. Your fingerprints are everywhere. They're going to be long-lasting, and you should be very proud of that. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'd like to have our city attorney read us into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Slusiewicz. We actually have two closed sessions tonight. The first closed session is employee appointment, employment under Government Code Section 54957 of the Government Code, that's in the Brown Act, and the positions are interim city manager and interim assistant city manager. We also have tonight actually a special meeting that's to start after the conclusion of the current meeting. And that special meeting has one agenda item, and that is public employee performance evaluation under the Brown Act, the title for the Director of Finance. My recommendation at this point with the two is to not adjourn the regular meeting and to move into the, at your choice, either the special meeting or continue with the regular meeting, and then take the other item. In other words, I think you can go ahead and make a choice right now.
You're given the discretion. I'd like to do the special meeting and then the closed session meeting, but they're both closed session.
Correct.
Actually, I'd prefer the other. I think the first meeting that we had scheduled, which was the interviews of Debbie Bell and Stephen Earlson, especially Debbie's here as well, and then we can go back into the special one.
You know, that might make more sense.
Yes, I think it would.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I wasn't even thinking about that. You're correct. I don't have any objection to that?
I concur.
Okay. Yeah, no, yeah, that's, that, I wasn't even thinking. Makes all the sense. Okay. But, but we don't have to reconvene and reconvene out, though. We can, we can do that in one felled swoop right now that we're going into closed session for a regular meeting and a special meeting, right?